Welcome to the Planning Commission. If you are planning on speaking on tonight's items, please fill out a public speaker form. They are located at the front of chambers by the front doors on the table. Once you have filled out the form, please bring it to me and we will call you down when it's time for the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And welcome to the September 26, 2023 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may be caused to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission. And at this point, I would like to call on Commissioner Acosta Galvin to lead us in the- At this time, I'd like to have roll-
Good evening, Commissioner. Present, Acosta Galvin.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Chair Pellman.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
At this point, the items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any comments?
Public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you. Hearing items. It is environmental impact report number 21-004, general plan number 21-004, zoning map amendment number 22-3, zoning 22-005, and conditional use permit number 21-024, Bolsachica Senior Living- Before we proceed to the next step, I'd like to ask commissioners and they'll start if you have any disclosures regarding this item and do you have any?
Site almost daily for the city staff.
Commissioner Kennedy.
No disclosures other than I did drive the site a couple of times between both meetings.
Okay.
Site myself as a-
And I spoke to two of the consultant for the applicant.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
A consultant from the applicant walked the site.
Representative from that- Chair Pellman. I both spoke with the applicant, representative on to and drove around the area. Thank you. Okay. The next thing is staff. May we have a presentation, please?
Yes. Project Planner Hayden Beckman will be giving the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, and good evening, Madam Chair. We're here this evening to provide the proposed project referred to as the Bolsachica Senior Living Community. Hayden Beckman, project planner, and following staff's presentation, the applicant and their team are- Separate presentation as well. Just to begin, the project includes a total of five applications, a general plan amendment, a zoning text amendment, conditional use permit, and environmental impact report, which I'll describe later shortly. And so I'd like to introduce the project. It's located at the southwest corner of Warner Avenue at Bolsachica Street. I think the coming up shortly. And the project includes two parcels combined for just over 380 lot size. The site is outlined here in yellow and is currently developed with two current buildings. One is two stories and one is three stories totaling 55,000 square feet of total space. This would be removed upon project implementation. Across Warner Avenue to the north are a Walgreens and a CVS Pharmacy on the corner of Bolsachica. Across Bolsachica East is the existing Harbor Tire Pros at the corner and single-family residential farther south. The project site shares its southern property line with an existing Frontier Communications Office building, and directly to the west are the Monticello Residential Apartments. The project request includes conditional use permit number 21-024, and it is a request to demolish 55,000 square feet of existing commercial space and construct a new five-story, approximately 298,000 square foot convalescent facility with onsite alcohol sales and consumption at a maximum overall height of 65 feet. The facility would consist of 202 total units, a subterranean parking garage, and associated hardscape and landscape improvements. It is on a property with a grade differential that is greater than three feet, and the project would include over 25,000 cubic yards of excavation. More specifically, of the 202 units of the proposed facility, 28 would be memory care units, 72 would be assisted living, and 102 would be independent living units. The subterranean parking garage would include 189 total parking spaces. There are four other entitlement requests that complete the proposed project's applications. As I mentioned, the environmental impact report would analyze the potential environmental impacts associated with the project. The general plan amendment is a request to amend the land use designation of the subject site from commercial general to mixed use with a specific plan overlay. The zoning map amendment would amend the zoning designation of the site from commercial general to a specific plan. And the zoning text amendment establishes the Bolsachica Senior Living Community specific plan over the subject site. And so as I mentioned, the general plan amendment would revise the current designation with surrounding uses. As you can see, they include both commercial general, residential medium density, and public semi-public uses. And the CG zone would be replaced with mixed use and a specific plan overlay. The zoning map, the project site is currently designated on the zoning map as CG and shown here with surrounding land uses. The request for zoning map amendment would revise this designation from CG to the Bolsachica Senior Living Community specific plan. As abbreviated, it would be SP 19. This would constitute the 19th specific plan should it be adopted at the City Council. The zoning map amendment request would, via designating the site for a new specific plan, provide for the orderly development of the subject, of the site to ultimately create a cohesive senior living community. Adoption of the zoning map amendment would be in conformity with public convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice because the zoning, the specific plan designation would implement the proposed general plan land use designations that includes a specific plan overlay. The zoning text amendment, as I mentioned, establishes a new specific plan, and the draft specific plan does provide for development standards and a wide range of care options and amenities that are proposed with this project to age in place, which are integral to the successful operation of the community are included. I have a brief graph that kind of compares some of the development standards that are currently in the CG zone with those that are included in the specific plan. The specific plan will serve as the zoning ordinance for the site and would be supplemented by the code for any provisions that are not addressed or customized by the specific plan. In comparison, the project is largely consistent with existing development standards of the CG zone. Under the proposed specific plan, there are a few areas of deviation. The height of the proposed structure is 65 feet, whereas the maximum height in the CG zone is currently 50 feet. Parking for the proposed project would generate a requirement of 209 spaces under current code, but following a parking analysis for the project and based on the proposed number of units, a total of 189 parking spaces are provided which would meet demand for this type of land use. Finally, current code stipulates a floor area ratio maximum of 1.5 in the CG zone. The specific plan would establish a maximum floor area ratio of 2.5, and the project FAR is calculated to be 2.42. It is important to note that the floor area ratio of a specific plan area of approximately three acres is comparable with the densities of specific plans that would include otherwise larger planning areas. So here is the floor plan for the subterranean garage. It, as I mentioned before, it'll, it'll provide a total of 189 parking spaces that include spaces for ADA and cleaner vehicles. There would be a total of three stairway access points outlined in green and four elevators at three access points for residents outlined in pink. There will also be one service elevator for employees. Parking demand was analyzed in a project-specific parking study that compared the zoning code's calculation with current industry standards and peak demand. Current code would require 209 spaces, whereas the study conservatively estimates that peak demand for parking would not exceed 166 spaces. To provide flexibility for the operation of the proposed community, the specific plan requires 189 onsite spaces. This does not include four at-grade spaces that are provided in the at-grade drop-off area facing Bolsachica. A senior living land use does not generate parking demand that's equal to that of either a residential or commercial-only project. As such, parking demand is reduced as our daily trips for evaluating the potential for traffic or transportation impacts. Of particular importance also is access onto and away from the site. And briefly covering in the operation, the facility will remain open and staff 24/7. This use will be a controlled environment, limiting access to persons either entering or leaving the building. And the project includes the subterranean parking garage for residents, their guests, and employees of the use. The subterranean garage is accessed, indicated here by a double red arrow, in a single two-way driveway located along the Bolsachica frontage. A little bit farther north along Bolsachica is the passenger drop-off area, and there's also two emergency vehicle lanes, and there will be a dedicated right-in, right-out only driveway off of Warner to provide access for emergency vehicles, service vehicles, and also waste vehicles. Here are the east and north elevations for the project. These are fully rendered to show the colors, materials, and proposed landscaping. Now, it is a bit hard to see, but the maximum building height here is 65 feet. Under existing commercial general requirements, an additional 10 feet of overall height is permitted, but only for parapet walls, stairways, elevators, and mechanical equipment. And this additional space is allowed to provide screening for that equipment and enhancement of the elevations that would, that would incorporate these elements into the overall design of the building. The proposed specific plan would permit a max overall height of 65 feet and five stories. The zoning code also allows four feet, these would be parapet wall allowances, to accommodate —I already mentioned that, I'm sorry. I'll move on. Here's a section drawing that helps to kind of break down those various requirements I just mentioned. First, the overall maximum building height is 65 feet. Now, indicated here in shading is the occupied space and mass of the building. Now, this would actually measure out to 64 feet, three inches. The specific plan would also allow an additional four feet of height for parapet walls. And there's your parapet walls on the proposed building. This again is to screen rooftop mechanical equipment, and this is the same requirement that currently exists in the code. The specific plan makes the same accommodation for an additional 10 feet in height, and this enables a roof access stairway that would measure overall 73 feet, 11 inches, and that's indicated here in pink. And therefore, the proposed project doesn't include any portion of the primary habitable building that would exceed 65 feet. The proposed increase in maximum height is to accommodate a custom design for the senior living community wherein each floor is specifically designed to accommodate an adequate level of comfort and access for the living spaces. Staff has evaluated the proposed height of the project and finds that the height differential, when compared to the maximum development standards of the commercial general zone, to be compatible in that the project provides an additional upper story setback to offset the primary massing of the fifth floor. There were, just to briefly summarize, the Planning Commission did hold a study session on August 22. There was one public comment at the meeting in opposition. At that time, we were also collecting over about 50 comment letters, part of the draft EIR. The response to those comments is included in the final EIR, which was posted online. At tonight's, for tonight's public hearing, staff did receive a total of 18 comment letters. Seven of them were in support, 11 of them are in opposition. The comment letters generally talk about three primary areas of concern: potential traffic impacts, building size, and how employees would, would impact. The initial study portion of this project's EIR analyzed for potential impacts based on traffic identified through levels, thresholds of significance as established in the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, to assess impact, project trips that are generated during construction or operation of the project are calculated based on established trip generation rates. And the initial study identified that the project would result in a net reduction of 410 daily trips to the project site. This net reduction is attributed to the change in use and the fact that commercial uses do generate more trips than a senior living community. The second identified issue would be the building size, and generally, this would be a policy decision, but as discussed here and at the study session, the project's design does incorporate numerous features that reduce the bulk and massing, which would make it consistent with the design guideline, the city's design guidelines and those of the proposed specific plan. Finally, for employees, it is estimated that there would be a total of 110 employees, but again, remember, the project would operate over 24 hours daily, and that means that there would be three shifts, estimated to have three shifts. And the number of employees onsite during various shifts at any given time is anticipated to be 80, and if you break it over between a day shift, a second shift, and overnight, you would have about 38 employees onsite for the day shift, you would have 32 estimated for the second shift, and approximately 10 for an overnight shift. And so those numbers were included in, in the project's parking demand study. Finally, wanted to talk about the final environmental impact report. The project was analyzed under final EIR 21-004. The EIR process began in November 2022 when the city issued a notice of preparation and hosted a scoping meeting to highlight the areas of analysis that would be included. By May 20 of 23, the draft EIR had been, was completed, and it was circulated for a 45-day public review period. Staff received a total of 50 comment letters from both agencies and interested parties, and as I mentioned before, the response to those comments and an errata to identify one revision during public review period is included in the final EIR document. The draft EIR concluded that the environmental impacts as a result of project implementation would not result in any significant unavoidable adverse impacts. All significant environmental impacts, which can be feasibly mitigated or avoided, have been mitigated or avoided by incorporation of project design features, standard code requirements, and proposed mitigation measures. Chapter four of the draft EIR includes proposed mitigation measures for potentially significant impacts to cultural resources, geology and soil, and tribal cultural resources to ensure that no significant adverse impacts to the environment would occur. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program is included as attachment number 13 to the staff report, and the mitigation measures have been incorporated into conditions of approval for the project. So the Planning Commission has discretionary authority over the requested conditional use permit. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve CUP number 21-024 with findings and suggested conditions because the project is located on a site that is physically suitable for the type and density of development and can accommodate the new facility and improvements in compliance with applicable city standards and the proposed specific plan. Now, as discussed in the EIR, the project would result in a net reduction of daily trips when compared to the existing commercial uses on the project site. The proposed uses will be compatible with the surrounding uses and is consistent with the applicable general plan goals and policies. The project would provide an appropriate infill development on an underutilized lot and provides a mix of housing types to meet the economic, social, and housing needs of the community. Staff also requests that the Planning Commission recommend the following actions to City Council: that the Planning Commission recommend to certify EIR 21-004 as adequate and complete, and also recommend to adopt general plan amendment 21-004, zoning map amendment 21-003, and zoning text amendment 22-005. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is joined tonight by Ryan Bensley of LSA, whose team prepared the environmental impact report for the project. He is available remotely. And also present tonight, as I mentioned, is the applicant, Tom Lawless of Heinz, and his team, who also have a prepared presentation for the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Just one second, I just have to look at a couple of things. Okay, at this time, do commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? And I can call on commissioners. Oh, here we go. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes. Just a quick question for staff. So this session, none of the things would go towards our Rena numbers. My conversations with staff, to my understanding is that that has changed. If you could provide sort of a, Mr. Beckman?
Thank you. Following that discussion, we did look into that internally, and for the purposes of giving the Rena numbers, the independent- could be for moderate to high-income levels for affordable units, and those could be captured retroactive as action on a housing element in the future, but that would be included as part of this project.
Okay. And then, in the report that we received today, the PowerPoint presentation is 202 units, but in the specific plan, it says up to 200.
Kicked off, and the EIR began its process of analyzing the project. The narrative and the scope of the 15 units, it's been revised to 202. However, the analysis of the environmental impacts and the specific plan remains separate. So that's what the project maximum outcome would be. The condition permit of 202 units, we actually request from the applicant, requesting approval of only 202, even though 200 is analyzed.
You mean that we could go back and instead of putting 215, we could put 202 in the specific plan, or just keep it at 215?
Well, for the purposes of analysis, we would keep it at 215.
So they could go move up to 215 if so wished.
Just to clarify, the request before you would be approval for 200 units. If they wanted to exceed that, that would require a subsequent action. But the zoning specific plan in environmental analysis analyzed to 215.
Okay. And then, could you explain to the reasoning why we need to do 215 for just the site? Because I know, as we discussed, so downtown has a specific plan, Beach and Water Quarter has their own. Could you sort of explain the reasoning behind the specific plan just for this site?
Sure. So in the context of chapter 215, by the provisions for establishing specific plans, and those that either come from the City Council, or it could also be a property owners that want to propose a specific plan for a defined portion of the community. Typically, if it's a City Council-directed specific plan for your area, basically, if it's a specific plan that's proposed, the zoning code has an established minimum size of two acres, and this project does exceed that. It is about 300. So currently acceptable metric zoning development standard.
My last question is for, I believe, Public Works. So I walked the four corners of the intersection, and the, you know, when you push the button to cross the stop sign or the sidewalk, those are the old school, so they don't, I mean, if it's a, if we have a facility for the, I would hope that the city would look into upgrading those, you know, the newer ones make beeping sounds for those that are hearing impaired, also legally blind. Is some sort of way that we can address that as we move forward with, move forward with the project?
So Commissioner Rodriguez, as we do with intersections, the project, we do monitor the changes to whatever it be, whether it's single-facing for the vehicles or for pedestrian driving.
And that would come through the impact fees from the development itself, or is that sort of on a schedule?
Anything done to modify, accommodate the residents of that facility would be done in the Public Works budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Next would be Commissioner Adam.
Thank you, Chair. For you, I want to clarify something in the alternatives. I think compare the, the proposed project with the maximum allowable project under existing zoning, just do a zoning comparison of the project.
I think you're right, Chair, where the EIR does identify selection of alternatives, and the EIR talks about the project alternative and a build-out in the context of the guidelines.
The max, I'm looking at the maximum build-out, yeah.
So from a zoning perspective, the maximum looked at what would be a most likely project should, proposed project not move forward. In that context, the document current development standards and a certain amount of new commercial development. And so in that, it is a comparison of what zoning could provide for under current code with no specific plan, and that compares that to the proposed project under the proposed specific plan. And so in that comparison, it seeks to that kind of text, and it does so, and there's a couple conclusions that the document makes in that section.
So we could do a 200,000-square-foot building, up to 50 feet in height, could have a potential demand, daily trip demand of up to 7,500?
Under current code, under the maximum development standard allowable, that's correct.
Thank you.
Hayden, can you just review on floor ratio and how that's calculated?
Sure. So floor area ratio is, again, just a, but if you, it's on the size of a project, much occupied building space can be in that project, inverse relationship. And in certain cases, it's used as a maximum, it can also be used as a minimum. Under current zoning requirements, there's a floor area ratio of the CG zone of 1.5. That means that you can build occupied square footage, 1.5 times the net square footage of the building. And the, and is proposing an alternative to 1.5, it's proposing 2.5. And so- And so if the specific allow for more is one of the deviations that the specific plan is proposing to make.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, just one last question. I've received numerous concerns, but one setback current standards, if the property owner wanted to redevelop that area as commercial, they're still allowed ten feet of space, correct? Can this stating?
Well, yes. The specific plan is utilizing the current setbacks of the CG zone, and that would be ten feet for front and street-side.
Okay. So it would be the same, essentially?
Effectively.
Okay.
Eric Wood?
Yeah, one question for some findings for approval for the conditional use permit. Different quantities of earthwork. I see twenty-five thousand yards, and I see five-thousand yards.
And, I'm sorry, is that in, could you point me in the direction of the?
Yeah, it's attachment one-point-four.
Okay.
First condition for the conditional use permit.
So Commissioner just for the purposes of the record, I want to clarify the two figures. Thousand in the document is a reference to the square footage on the two properties. Twenty-five thousand is a threshold that's established in the zoning code for what would trigger a conditional use permit if the project were to involve more than twenty-five-thousand cubic yards of excavation. We reference both of them of what the existing site is, but I think if you're reading in the findings wanting to clarify that it's twenty-five-thousand conditional use permit.
Are there any other committees that have? Okay. So if there we've we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have fifteen speakers currently. I'm going to call the first half. If you wish, if you want to speak and not
The applicants have a presence put in speaker slips, sometimes it's more efficient to allow them to present as a group.
Perfect. I
Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you. And if you could, in your presentation on traffic hit on the alcohol that and basically, that would be the okay. Thank you.
Thanks for having us again here. We really appreciate it. Again, my name's Thomas Lawless, I'm with Heinz, and this is Christopher Hilbert with the keep my comments brief. We did discuss a lot of this at the study session, but our main message tonight is that Huntington Beach has a severe need for housing, and we intend to build the best project in the city where seniors can age in place, family and friends, engage in lifelong enrichment, overcome social isolation, and also from the status quo. So needs more senior living. The population higher. And Huntington Beach is ahead of the curve. Already, one out of four Huntington Beach residents are over sixty, and that's projected to double over the next twenty years. These seniors may be living in multi-story, single-family homes, potentially with a spouse who may have passed away, and those can become unsustainable, unsafe, and socially isolating environments. You know, and the city has not mixed up with planning options. Sixty-five population is projected to be around seventy-thousand residents in the city. With this project, the total supply is thousand. Because of this imbalance, seniors are forced to look outside Huntington Beach, away from their family and friends, to find places to live. Not only that, but the average age of the senior living units here in the city is twenty-three years old, and, you know, what seniors are demanding these days has changed. Our intent is to deliver a facility that seniors and their families can be proud of, with a wide-ranging array of amenities, social engagement opportunities, lifelong enrichment programs with a partnership with Golden West College, and most importantly, a continuum of care housing folks from independent, assisted living, through memory care, and these seniors don't have to leave the community as they move through those levels of care. You know, providing these facilities in an existential zone such as Warner and Bolsachica, across the street from two pharmacies, nearby a dialysis facility, nearby the walking trails of Bolsachica, and outside of a purely residential neighborhood feels like an ideal location for a use of this type. So Heinz and Clearwater have worked together quite a lot. We're best-in-class developers, and that's why we're best-in-class project here in Huntington Beach. You know, our team is Orange County-based. We have a track record of over fifty years, and, you know, we really look forward to delivering an amazing project for the city. I do briefly want to touch on some community benefits of the project and some issues that have been brought up in comments. First, this free existing housing. As seniors move out of their homes into this facility, that frees up homes in Huntington Beach for others to move into without building a single new unit. And roughly eighty percent of independent-living residents are moving out of larger, single-family homes. Second, this project actually reduces traffic. Our EIR studied the traffic impacts, and our project versus the current office and retail use reduces traffic by half. And that's also removing all access points on Warner Avenue, except for only service vehicles. So we currently have multiple curb cuts on Warner that people can access the site through, and our project would only allow service vehicles to enter on Warner. The primary traffic is directed to Bolsachica, which is a little bit of a slower street. And to those who are still skeptical about traffic, as you might imagine, memory care residents and assisted-living residents don't drive. Independent-living residents, some do bring a car, about thirty percent of residents bring a car, but they drive very infrequently. And as we already discussed, we look to roughly have about forty employees maximum at any given time. So if you look at the number of independent-living units at around a hundred, thirty residents bring a car, they're not really driving, that's thirty cars, and then you have a maximum of forty employees any time, that's roughly seventy vehicles. You know, if you drive by the site today with the existing law offices, a salon, a karate facility, fast food restaurants, there's more than forty-five cars there parked today. And it's not even a hundred percent occupied. Third, this site is bound to be redeveloped eventually. Outdated suburban office projects are in dire straits, as the group knows. And for those who are concerned about a specific plan here, you know, we do want to note that the existing general plan, as just discussed, does accommodate what we're proposing. By right, without planning commission oversight, the site could be turned into one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-square-foot medical office building, or one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-square-feet of retail. You know, potentially with doctors' offices and a revolving door of patients coming and going. Both of those projects produce twelve times the amount of vehicle trips that our project is proposed to provide. So one could imagine a developer coming in, replacing this derelict office building with a TJ Maxx, a hardware store, you know, a Walmart, neighborhood market, any of those are by right. Or a multi-story medical office building that's fifty feet high. You know, instead, we're proposing a project where very few residents drive, the peak employee count is below what we see at the current site today, and, you know, these are and they're subterranean parking, which reduces the noise. The city would be hard-pressed, in our opinion, to find an alternative use for this location that would be better than a senior living community. And finally, we do want to address the height. We acknowledge citizens are concerned about the height we have designed it. It's provided best-in-class project with amenities and an enriching environment, and so seniors need to enjoy but in a controlled environment, which is why our building has a massive donut hole in the center, well, as an area in the back with a pool, that is completely open-air, but also self-contained. You know, these seniors need a place to be outside, and it can't be directly in front of the building, so we've cut out a lot of the space on the interior, which has forced us to go up a little bit. A smaller project could not provide the need for outdoor becallec space, multiple dining options, a pool, a gym, a salon, et cetera. You know, seniors who rarely leave their building don't want to be stuck at a project where they go to the same cafeteria every day, and they have no outdoor options to relax, and they lack an exciting and diverse activity spaces. As Huntington Beach leaders have said, the city is fully built out, and if we could find a ten-acre site to build a three-story community with these type amenities, we would love to do that, but this simply does not exist. The reality is, the only way to house the growing Huntington Beach senior population in a community that our seniors demand and deserve is to build one level higher than the current general plan accommodates. I'll hand it off to Christopher to talk about services.
Thank you. I appreciate my development partner going in depth in terms of the design and location. I'm primarily focused on the quality of life of our residents. Two things come to mind when we think about that. The first is that the component that is most important is proximity to family. Given the availability of available housing for seniors a a lot of loved ones are moving to South Orange County, Newport Beach, and then north towards Los Alamos and Seal Beach. We think this provides an opportunity to keep Huntington Beach residents in Huntington Beach, close to their friends and families. The second portion of that that is important is socialization. I'm sure you've all heard recent studies that compared isolation and loneliness to smoking upwards of two packs a day of cigarettes. It's just not healthy in the long term for any Huntington Beach residents, much less seniors. So we created a vibrant, resort-style living environment for our residents that has multiple opportunities to engage with other residents, with team members, with friends and family throughout the community that we are developing. I think part of what we touched base on was that we provide a continuous continuum of care for our residents. So residents can move in very independent in our independent-living spaces and age in place over time to avail themselves of more and more services as they need them. To say that any age or any any specific need for a senior is blanket would be erroneous. So let's just say that we target what we find is the greatest needs of our community as they age in place. So you'll have everything from multiple dining options. I'll touch base on the point about alcohol. As it turns out, some of our seniors do like to have occasional glass of wine or a cocktail, and given that we're focused on quality of life, and we do provide dining on space for our residents and their guests, there will be opportunities for alcohol sales in accordance with all the California state laws. But again, that's for our residents and their guests. We continue to focus and have designed a community that has best-in-class amenities throughout. Why is this? As we pointed, as my development partner pointed out, the fact is, the majority of our assisted-living and memory care residents spend the majority of their time at our community. So we want to provide both indoor and outdoor opportunities for them to participate in activities. We have multiple dining venues, and we also have places that are really engaging for families and friends to come and join our residents. Again, the two things: socialization, being in close proximity to family and friends. Quite simply, it's about providing the best living opportunity for these folks as they age in place without a need to move from the community itself.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Mr. Coit?
Okay, I'm going to call down the first half of our fifteen speakers. Please come down to the podiums and line up at each microphone. The following speakers, please come down. Paul Geary, John Villa, Brian Genovese, apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name, Philip Smith, Taylor Friend, Logan Mihara, and Liza
Ready? Project that you're talking about. I've had a situation in my family where my dad lived in a living facility, something like and I who live close by, and they're getting to something that's really relevant. So I'm for this. I think it would be a great addition in comparison to what's there now. And I don't see Huntington Beach, you know, as the developers talked about, I don't see any kind of facilities anywhere, and I'd like to see it. That's my input.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Next, Mr. Villa?
Yes. Hello, Commissioners, my name is, and I'm here tonight to support of the project. Executive Director for the Huntington Beach Wellness Conservancy. I'm on the Board of Directors for Visit HB. I'm an appointed commissioner for the HB Public Works Commission. I'm on the Board of Directors for the HB Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the executive director and CFO for the Huntington Council on Aging. I do a lot for this community. I do a lot for this city, and I want to see it grow. I also want to see this type of facility for our seniors in place. I wouldn't be on the Council on Aging if I didn't feel that it was important for us. Also a resident of senior living facility, not, excuse me, senior residents, Landmark, if you're familiar with that facility, over there. I understand the importance of community for which amenities within the community, and offer a way to remain in HB with downsides as a larger home to something that's more manageable. I also see a need for the communities like this to help families with loved ones stay close by to the family that they need to be in there. So recently, a gentleman just said, of a father as physician, from his own home to living in a senior community to care at home in Huntington Beach, to a hospital. And the biggest problem is transition. You never know who your next person was going to be, your friends were going to be, because as you change from one facility to the next. Now, here's a man that retired from the Air Force, that had to move every year. This is the worst transition for him he faced in his life. I have that happen to in our community. Moving from one facility to another caused my dad a lot of stress. It's difficult for him, and that was never an issue for him. He's like me, very outward, but he found it very difficult to transition from one facility to another. In addition, as I mentioned, I'm on the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce, and I know the Chamber of Commerce has submitted a letter of report for this facility. So with everything said, I just wanted to know, as a citizen of this community, that's very interested where this community grows, grows, I'm of this facility. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Genovese? Is that right?
Hi. Your work. My name's Brian Genovese, and good evening, esteemed Commissioners and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address you guys this evening about the project in Bolsachica, senior living project. I'm a Realtor and also a resident. My grandparents bought here in nineteen-sixty-six, so I've been here over fifty years. So since Thrifty Mart was over, we're twenty-four hour fitnesses, and Metalark Airport was here. Change is happening. That's what it's all about. All about change, and all about growing with the community and the population, and especially the baby boomers, which is my dad's generation, is, you know, getting to a point where they're in their mid-to-late seventies and going into their eighties, and my grandfather's in his nineties right now. From a selfish perspective, from a perspective, this would be an opportunity for more inventory in the community, for people to move in and create, generate some more projects for the city, and enable the residents to stay here that are currently here, which is wonderful, because we do relocation for our clients as real estate agents, and, you know, it's important for them to be able to stay where they want to stay. My grandfather actually moved out of the area for a while. He got to get back to Huntington Beach. It's my place, you know, I want to be, and, you know, I've been there, it's my home, and I don't want to have to see him leave here again, so. And then from another perspective, just from just a common sense perspective, like and the a few guys have driven down Delaware or Florida or Golden West past the Merrill property there. There's no traffic there. Inhabitants ain't big on by. It causes the traffic and that's beach traffic going down that way. So, and half of the residents aren't even going to be, you know, driving, and the living facilities aren't going to be driving. They're going to provide transportation for these guys like Loser Rule does and those guys. You know, I think it's imperative to embrace change And I think it's imperative to embrace change and, you know, it's one of those things where several of his friends are in that area. Social aspect, and they did a research study years ago saying these people lived to be 90 years in this community, and the common factor of them being, living to that age was a social aspect. So you got to be around people, and you got to be able to exchange ideas and stuff and keep your brain active and keep yourself out there. So, and I think it's going to be something we need to have. And we know when these facilities get built, they fill up fast. So there is a need for these things. I'd say, you know, I'd recommend for you guys to approve this, and I recommend Council to approve it, and thank you guys for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Smith.
Well, Commissioners, my name is Phil Smith, and I'm a really longtime resident of this I think seniors need housing. This transition business is no joke. Getting from one place to another, you no longer need a three or four-bedroom house is tough. Finding a town that you love is tough. But seniors also need this tiered capability. Healthy people want to go a lot. Those that maybe aren't so healthy are going to slow down a little bit. And those who have health problems are going to need additional attention. So I'm seeing in favor of this project, and I would just, I noticed several speakers are referring to seniors as them. It's a demographic, but they are us. And if we're not there already, I expect we'll hope to be. So, your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, Taylor Friend?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Friend. I believe about the existing use. I'm actually speaking in favor of the project. So I am a commercial agent. I operate office properties across Orange County. So I'm very intimately familiar with this project, projects across Orange County. I work as part of a team of seven individuals. We complete roughly about 100 transactions. If I didn't mention, I've been doing 12. So I do have quite a bit of experience in this area. For COVID, office, no surprise, it's changed dramatically. Work from home has changed the landscape and the vacancy of what office is today. Projects are suffering, and we're seeing major changes. Specifically, some trends that we're seeing, folks working from home, which is causing businesses to downsize their office footprint, so using less space, increasing vacancy. We're also seeing consolidation of locations where corporate locations, they're now single locations. Some remain in the city, some moving outside of the county or even outside of the state. We are seeing what is most important, equality, which is just to attract their quality office properties, attract their employees to the office, to get people to hire talent. And so we are seeing a flight away from Class C buildings, NB buildings, C buildings like the ones that we're speaking about here today. The other thing that specifically digging into Huntington Beach is the vacancy level of office properties is actually the highest for office in all of Orange County of any city, per our report from second quarter. There is no other city that has a higher office vacancy rate at this point. The rate for all of Orange County is currently at 2% to 9%. Digging with vacant office buildings that they tracked unwanted and unattended and problematic, a thing, a building like this is also being maintained at a level that is beneficial to the community. The rental rates also for this property are well below what the market. So not only is the problem not sustained maintaining the property, so it's only further degrade. At this point, the only thing is to move for some sort of redevelopment. I mentioned it could go by right to some other uses that could be very detrimental to the society or the city, and that's the project on hand.
Thank you, Mr. Friend. Could I ask Lisa and Rebecca?
I'm also going to call the speakers. Amy Santos, Louis Babari, Tang Holt, Tom Dill, Christine Wendell.
And the next speaker, if they could come next to the current speaker? Because there's two mics. Thank you. Okay. Yes? Or who's the next one? I have it as Lisa, but Lisa?
I could go. Yeah. Hi, thank you for your time this evening. I am a resident of Huntington Beach, have been for over 20 years. I live in the immediate vicinity, and I can say that the descriptions that have been described this evening about seniors seem to be entirely off. This project that's being proposed is for seniors 55 and older. Three of the units made it to be for independent living. Seniors 55 and older don't early. So to describe them as, you know, incapacitated, not enjoying alcohol, this place is proposed to have a rooftop lounge, a pool, all wonderful amenities. People younger and old, well into their 80s, well into their 90s. I have two uncles that served World War II. They were still drinking. So that's a little bit off par for how it's being described. Actually, with the units, the largest one being proposed at 2,300 square feet, and it's a three-bedroom. That doesn't strike me as somebody who's seen a large unit like that. Over 100 for independent living, and people find it a lot of living. Additionally, that location has only one road in and one road out. Over the last 20 years, local residents, including myself, have increasingly been stopped at stoplights, waiting for it to turn green. When it turns green, five cars get through, and then here we are again, waiting for the next red light. So it is completely jam-packed with traffic. Brightwater was built, it got worse. So we're dealing with major, major traffic congestion with just one lane in on Los Chica and one lane out. I spoke to Hayden back this week, the environmental impact. We're trying to portray an accurate picture because the metrics that were used are not accurate. Should have been putting a comparison of current metrics of traffic versus the new ones that are going to be occurring. That did not occur from my understanding. Right now, I can tell you, I live in the area, and the traffic that comes in, I see it all day, I see it all evening. It's hardly any traffic in that commercial building. So to change the lighting so it can be mixed-use, and living there, it was 155 people in each unit, that's going to be over 200 extra people there, there's going to be over 200 cars there. That doesn't, the convalescing people, the memory people, I'm all seniors in my family. Just not the right, nor the right structure. And you talk about isolation, the worst place that people, senior, want to be is in some tall building, isolated. If anything, they need to be out where there's more outlay of land. There's not enough land there. You're putting freight up in the air. That's hardly good for cement up in the air. Again, I just, the traffic accident can into consideration for the environmental impact. Four-way intersection with cars that are going 65, 85 miles, witness accidents in that four-way intersection. The last thing I would want to see is someone that literally, senior that everyone seems to be talking about tonight, someone like a walker getting clipped right there on the corner of Chica. And Walgreens, they're in talks for it to be closed hundreds and hundreds across the nation. So I don't consider that a good enough reason to build such a structure. I feel that it's taking away resources from current population in Huntington Beach. We are a large population with one nearly dilapidated hospital in town. So for trauma and emergencies, it's supposed to be taken. We don't even have a good enough hospital in here to handle the current population we have. And they're talking about convalescing people that will have emergencies at all hours of the night to come into the area, fire.
Thank you.
It seems very irresponsible.
Thank you. Next. Are you Amy Santos? Or are you? No, I'm Rebecca. Rebecca's next. And Amy Santos. And, okay. Go. All right. Okay.
Great. Hi, I wanted to add Melissa Key, longtime manager of three properties that her family owns that are south in Bolsochica on Dunbar. Was in support of this project. She'd been informed it was going to be four stories. Now that she found that the complex is five stories and 65 feet tall, which is 80 feet in the existing executive center, which is set way back in the parking lot, realized that would just be, with a 10-foot setback, that would be towering on Chica, and she wanted me to accept. I am 7042 Bolsochica. My house is across the street from this complex. I'm the first resident. You've probably seen my gorgeous medicine, Morton Bay fig tree there that dwarfs everything if you've been to this site. And that tree, actually, a local Huntington Beach park. Our family has owned the property for over 70 years. I have concerns about the proposed complex. The height is my main concern. It's incompatible with the existing residences and neighborhoods. A 10-foot setback from the curb, that's right up against, the area is, I agree, senior housing is needed and is good land use, but I also have a concern why there are three-bedroom units that are over 2,300 square feet. Proposed would compromise the view of the premises on Bolsochica. My property will be in shade from two, three people after that, and other residents on the East of Chica will also be that way. I also have concerns. All access is being on Bolsochica, it already, there are traffic problems, and in case of an emergency evacuation, which we all saw recently on the island of Maui, it is the access for all of Brightwater, all of Los Potos, Dunbar, and all the apartments that are also on Bolsochica. The complex needs to be reduced to the maximum limit, and I agree, seniors need community connection, and I just feel like a monolithic building like that is not a fit. It destroys the vision of that little enclave, and it doesn't feel homey. If you've driven past a complex that's pretty close, and me in that intersection, that building is actually only four stories, and it feels very monolithic. The one behind it, I think, is six. So if you look between the two, they're on the east side. Thank you, Commissioners. I request the, request the Council approving it.
Thank you. Before you start, Amy Santos, could I have Mr. Mihara up speak after she's done, please? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Now, you're also looking at towel and linen suppliers that deliver laundry services, oxygen and medical supplies, and we're not even to the transportation companies that are actually going to be providing these individuals access to daily facilities, medical appointments, or venturing out into our community. I want to just say, I'm not opposed to senior living. I'm actually encourage the development of senior living, but not to this extent. In addition to that, we're going to have abundance of medical personnel that will also be attending ambulances, fire department, and this, keep in mind, is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that are all set to exit down Bolsochica into our single-family community. So my family and I, again, who did not receive this notification of this project or the opportunity to speak, is actually opposed to this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Before you start, Mr. Mihara. Okay. And are you Louis Babari? Yes? Sir? No. You're next. You're next. Sorry. Okay. Mr. Mihara?
Okay. Thank you, Board, for hearing me out. Let me start. I was, my family has lived in the immediate actual area for about over 20 years in Huntington Beach. So we're very familiar with that area. Kids went to music school there, they went to iKido classes there, and also the Little Caesars there. There's a lot of commercial businesses that we really enjoyed, and it's really a shame to see that you're talking about rezoning that into something that you're not going to see those businesses even backfilling in there. So that's one of the concerns I have. It's one word, I'd say, that building is ginormous. I don't know if that's a real word, but it's huge. And 50 feet, if that's a cutoff, and they're already, and it's alarming, they're talking about increasing it to 65 feet. I mean, nothing in the area looks anywhere close to that size. You're talking about a maximum height of maybe two stories high. Just the look and feel of most cities, when they go through planning, they say, you can't build something that looks just out of the ordinary. It just ruins the whole landscape there. There's, and I was really hoping that the planning commission could protect us so we can retain that kind of look and feel there. It is concerning to that, I hear a lot of voices here, people talking over here, of saying, I'll go for it, but I don't know if they actually live in the area. And the people that you're hearing that are opposed to it, the consistent thing is, they actually live right there. So we're, day to day, we're driving in and out of that intersection, we know how much traffic's there. I think all of us really do care about our elderly. When they get, I mean, my mom is over 80. I care about her. I'm going to be there probably in a couple, in about a couple decades, I'll be looking for something like that. So it's not like we're unempathetic about that. It's about, is it the right spot to put that? So I just was hoping that you guys could hear that out. Also, I underscore what she said about not receiving notice. We, I'm in Brightwater, 350 houses out there, none of us received any notice. The only notice we received was in February, and it directed us to fill out a form on the applicant's site, which is really unusual, because I thought usually it would be going to an independent collection of that so that the commission could read those and not be filtered to an applicant, because then there's a conflict of interest there. So I thought I'd bring that up. But I thank you for your time for hearing us, and good evening.
Thank you. Before you start, Paul Glunt is, are you Mr. Glunt? Yes? Yeah. Okay. Go, Mr. Babari.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us. I actually live right across the street, about half a block up, in Cobodamar condos. So if you guys, everybody, sounds like you've been driving the area. So my windows face, my kids' windows, the bedroom windows face Bolsochica. So you guys could always come over for a cup of coffee, and I'll let you, I'll let you in there on the patio, and you can see. So the building itself that's being proposed, again, I think everybody has a heart for seniors. I'm actually, I'm excited, because I'll probably be moving into one soon, so. But the building, the size is the main thing. It's huge. Cobodamar's 288 condos there, and we don't have, nobody has air conditioning. So there's going to be this five-story building blocking that ocean, that beautiful ocean breeze we get. We're not going to see the sun after 2 o'clock in the afternoon on certain time of the year. So. So it's a major, major building, guys. And again, I know it's hard, and we're all like, yeah, hey, we're all for development. We want to build. We want to think about seniors and all that. But it's in the vicinity of a lot of people. You know, there's a lot of individual homes there. Brightwater, when that was built, you know, there's a ton, they're going to be affected tremendously by the traffic. We are going to be affected just by the, by the direct impact of, of the noise, the light, all of that stuff. It's funny when they're talking about reduction, I don't think it's fair to say that there's going to be a reduction of traffic, you know? Let's be real. It's, the building's going to be six times larger than the current building there. So six times, right? We're going from a 50,000 square foot to a 300 square, square foot building. So it's obvious there's going to be a lot more. I don't think Little Caesars has that many employees, you know? So it's going to be, it's going to definitely be an impact. We can't just say no. So again, do we need it? Yes, we need it in the community. But I think there, the size, five stories, I think that's a bit much. And hopefully you guys will agree. So, all right? And apart from the, do I have time? Yeah, the, the hospital situation's true. I've had my boy who was rushed to the hospital, and they turned him away from the Huntington Beach Hospital because there was no room. You know, they, they sent him to HOG. So that's an ongoing issue, as I think many of, many people have experienced. So thank you very much for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
All right.
Barb Shanghold, could you come?
Tom Dillman.
Yes. Excuse me? Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, staff, fellow citizens of Huntington Beach. My name's Tom Dillman. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I live about several hundred feet away from this proposed I think it looks great. A very colorful presentation was put on by the developers. It looks good. However, I think it would fit in much better in a city like Long Beach or LA, the way it's, the configuration is specifically the height. I took a quick net search before I came out here, and I saw three different assisted senior living facilities. Merrill Gardens over on Golden West and Warner, Seaside Terrace, and Carmel Village in Fountain Valley. The one on Golden West has got 121 units, and it's three stories. The one in Fountain Valley is two stories, and the other one in Fountain Valley is three stories. This one is almost twice as tall as these other units, complexes in, in our area. It's just way too tall. It's just too massive. It's like sticking the Mall of America right next to this building, and that's, that's what it would look like. I also have some issues as far as the statistics, the stats in the presentation about reducing the traffic on Bolsachica and Warner by 50%. I'm wondering what the methodology, was that from Caltrans? Or, I don't know. The other stat was something like cutting, you know, 12 times the average daily trips. I'm wondering what, how that statistic was arrived at. Basically, it's, it needs to be reduced to three stories to fit in with the area. I'd like you to vote to continue this petition, but kick it back to the developer and have them come up with a three-story design for you to review. Another reason I ask this is because the voters in Huntington Beach approved, voted in our city council on one of the planks was that they would limit, you know, high, high density and tall buildings. And this fits in that category. So I ask you to respect, you know, the will of the Huntington Beach voters in that we, you know, I'm not anti-growth, and I'm not anti, anti-senior citizens, but it has to be done with what the community voters have decided when they voted in our city council. And that big thing was to, one of the planks was not to have like these huge monstrosities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Glunt, Mr. Glunt, you come up now. And she's going to speak first. Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Barb Changhold. I'm a resident of Brightwater. I'm also speaking on behalf of some other members that could not attend tonight. There's a winter Sosa study that on the Warner side, at 2:00 PM, the deep shade covers four lanes of traffic. As the afternoon progresses, the shadow will lengthen and enter the very busy four-way intersection, thus causing drivers to leave a fully sunlit lane and enter a very deep shade lane, all because of the proposed five-story building. This presents significant safety issues, both for drivers, bikers, and pedestrians. The deep shades of the five-story building creates a significant impact on humans, animal life, insect life, plant life, everyone. It is, this area is not designed for a building of that size at all. Yes, this area could use an improvement, perhaps, yes. But putting something like that there is just way overkill. Not to mention, when someone mentioned that there was a rooftop bar, whatever, entertainment center, there's the Coastal Commission that has told us in Brightwater to limit our lights because, for the, for the wildlife. If this building is going to protrude all this light from it, it's, it's going to damage the wildlife there, too. I Googled earlier, or actually, someone upstairs Googled, and I kind of overlooked. There's 32 assisted living communities in HB. I think if you want to put another one, this area is not the place to put it. There's a whole street down Beach Boulevard that we can put something like this. There's, there's buildings that are tattoo shops that are like, are areas that are rundown. Let's rebuild that area. Don't put it in a residential area with all of our families that respect and want to keep this area decent and quiet and a good-looking area. The noise factor of the construction, that's going to have a huge impact on people. People have been known to, there's lots of, three years of demolition, that's going to be a lot of headache for all the residents there. And you're going to do subterranean parking? And you're going to dig up the ground? No. This is just ridiculous. And all the people around there are going to get frustrated, and people are going to get on top of each other. It's not a good situation. So I really hope that you reconsider this project and find another area to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Wendell up there? Okay, Mr. Glunt.
Great. Thank you very much. My name's Paul Glunt. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I live about a mile from the proposed site. I'm an accountant and an attorney, and I'll be honest with you, when I came here today, I was going to try to wow you with facts and figures and things that are in my wheelhouse, lots of notes that I'm not going to read. I think all of my neighbors have really covered adequately. And to be honest, there are tons of reasons, facts and figures, objective reasons, to not have this monstrosity towering over our neighborhood. But really, I think I just want to talk about something that's more important, I think. It is what makes Huntington Beach special. When my wife and I moved to Huntington Beach, we looked, we lived in LA, which was fine. And we wanted to live somewhere special. And we looked all around California. We chose Huntington Beach. It's magical. It's special. The pier, the wetlands, the harbor, everything about Huntington Beach is special. When I walk around my neighborhood, I feel something. I feel happy that my daughter's being raised here. And when I sit here and I think about what this would look like, that we're going, bending over backwards to change our zoning rules to build a 65-foot monstrosity, that's the word, word that people have been using, and that's the only word I can think of, it sticks out like a sore thumb. And I have to ask myself, do we want to be the council that starts chipping away at what's magical about Huntington Beach? That's not a place that I want to be. I love Huntington Beach, and, God, I'm getting emotional, sorry about that. But I really want you to think about this, that it's not just facts and figures, it's the thousands and thousands of people who live in Huntington Beach, and we want to be here because Huntington Beach is magical. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendell? Christine Wendell?
Yeah, hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for listening and allowing me to share my voice with you. I'm also a long-term resident of Huntington Beach. I was born at the Huntington Beach Dilapidated Huntington Beach Hospital in 1969. I've lived in Huntington Beach all my life, except for my college years. I've raised my family here. My, I also have two aging parents who are 84. They live happily on their own. They're very active and very vibrant. When I think of Huntington Beach, then my parents moved here, bought a house on Graham and Warner, off Graham and Warner in 1966. What that attracted them to Huntington Beach from LA was just this beautiful little beachside community, very quaint, very welcoming, very, just a great place to raise their family. My parents own businesses. We own businesses in Huntington Beach. I just would hate to see it turn into, you know, this urban sprawl. We have the Edinger Corridor. We all know what that looks like around Bellaterra and Golden West College. We have the Beach Boulevard corridor, lots of tall buildings. We do have lots of senior living communities in and around Huntington Beach. I'm here today, I'm a resident of Brightwater. I just want to stop this urban sprawl. Again, that corner of Huntington Beach, I drive through that intersection about 15 times a day, picking up, dropping off kids. It's not conducive to a 65-foot, five-story building with 10, 10-foot easement from the street. That intersection is already so busy, I agree, there's only one street in and one street out of, for all those homes. And it's just not the right place for such a monstrosity. I'll use that word again because that's what we all think it is. I thank you for your time, and I hope that we can keep Huntington Beach, or at least that are, that area, that residential area, as quaint and as lovely as it's always been. This is not the corner, again, I'm, I'm all for senior housing, I'm all for transitional housing. I think we do have a lot of it, but we don't believe that that is the corner for a five-foot tall monstrosity 10 feet from the, from the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last, last speaker is Allison Meyer.
Good evening, council members. I'm not a great public speaker, but I'm passionate.
Pull it down so you're not bending there.
I'm passionate about opposing this project. My name is Allison Meyer. I've lived 30 years a half a block from where the proposed building is going to be. And I, too, like Mr. Gant, chose that area because it was charming, it was beachy, and it was where I wanted to spend the rest of my life. It's absurd to think that anybody's going to benefit from this except for the applicants. As far as the quality of life for the seniors that live there, are you trying to build this Club Med? This, you know, pool and parkside? I mean, the view from the backside of that building is buildings. I mean, most of the residents, I bet $5 million that not one of them will take a walk around Brightwater. The density in that area is so thick. From Algonquin all the way to Bolsachica, there is a myriad of apartment buildings, and on the other side also. Plus Brightwater, the traffic is horrendous. I live there. I hear it. 24 hours, all day long. We just can't bear the infrastructure to have more traffic. 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The lights, the deliveries, the ambulances, the everything, it's just absurd. And having it five stories tall, what are we trying to have our community look like Santa Monica, a city on the sand? I mean, if seniors wanted a great place to live, develop it near the senior center on Golden West, or let them go near Leisure World. It's just, that's the worst place to have that. So thank you for all the residents that came to speak to oppose about it. I'm surprised there's not more here, but a lot of people didn't get the notices. So thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, it's, we're going to close the public hearing, and it's time for commissioners to deliberate. So I believe Commissioner Kennedy's the first one that would like to have some comments.
Thank you, Chair. First off, everybody here likes seniors. So anything that happens tonight has zero to do with whether or not we adore our seniors. I guess I'm a senior. I got my ARB card 12 years ago. I've been here my entire life. So my observations, I stand by our study session when, when I kind of drew some observations. So I want to restate some of them for, for those that are here. So personally, I think it sets a bad precedent when we look to change zonings that were just laid out by our community development department in 2017. So there was, this is not an antiquated land, land use plan that was put in place just six years ago. That's my first thing. I'm just going to go through some bullet points. I've got notes. There's probably going to be a lot of non-sequiturs here. But some of the things I wanted to address is, first and foremost, 200 units to the Realtor that alluded to, this is not going to free up housing for the young at heart. These will not be affordable homes. Everybody says Huntington Beach is not affordable, as it is. People that can afford the, the rent at this location are not leaving modestly priced homes. So I just want to put that on the record. Secondly, on the unit count, so when you do your traffic study, you know, I don't think, as some of, some of the people have pointed out, these are multiple bedroom units. So I think you were using a one-to-one relationship on the unit count to the people living there. And I don't think that's a fair statement when you come to trying to reconcile the parking need or lack thereof. Another point I wanted to point out is, so suburban office is different than office. Office, urban office is an asset class that has been destroyed by COVID and work at home. Suburban office, on the other hand, one of the big drivers, if you watch any of the city council meeting, is work where you live. So suburban office is an asset class that right now is ripe for the purchase by new investors because it has been price-affected. But the bottom line is, with the companies with the return to work mandates that a lot of these companies are pushing out, there will be a need for suburban office. So I want to make sure that people do understand that. When it comes back to the parking, these are going to be vibrant seniors, and if the goal was to accommodate those who live here by their family, they're going to have families that are visiting quite often. So there's, I didn't hear any reference to accommodating the, just the family, the visitation, and the need for their parking as well. Somebody brought up something that said, you know, "We want to accommodate the seniors because they want to be here." Well, the seniors that were here long ago were here because they wanted to be here for the wide-open spaces. And they drove. They were the, that was the driving force of what attracted people back then. Now, we do all age, so the driver of this project is now the aging seniors who loved the wide-open spaces decades ago, and they want the accommodation, which is fine for that, for them to want that. I would probably want that, too. You know, we all have our favorite radio station. What's in it for me? WIFM. But you just, I just believe this is too much building, too many asks. Like I said, this is a heavy lift. We're looking to have a land use change, a zoning text amendment. There's, there's just a lot of things that are in play right now that should have been thought of less than six years ago when Huntington Beach was laying out their general land use plan. And again, as I said in the last meeting, I don't think it's because you, in the building department, lack foresight. I don't, so I can't put that on you. I think you logically laid out the plan then. The other thing that also I raised in the first time, I've spoken to some planners between this meeting and last, in the general study. It's, it's a little bit of an aberration to hear that the applicant wrote the specific plan. Somebody stated it's some of the norm. I found that to be contrary to what reality is. It's a little bit of an aberration to hear that the applicant wrote the specific plan. Somebody stated it's some of the norm. I found that to be contrary to what reality is. I did call for the notes. I asked Matt for the notes. He did provide. The applicant wrote the specific plan. The city had iterations. So, I asked our Building Department, send them to me, and they did, and I did a side-by-side comparison. I thought, and this is not a slight to the city, but I thought the edits were so passive. It's, hey, I need the word "standard" here. Change this from "the" to "them." So de minimis that they, that the applicant did apply every one of them. The one they did leave out, though, I found interesting, was when it came to utilities in the specific plan written by the applicant, it did raise the, it made the statement about overhead utilities. Now, you guys did put in a notation that said, "Those will all be underground." And this was just something that just struck me is, why did they get all the other edits and in the specific plan? Now, they may say, "Oh, we missed it," or "We'll do that." But I just thought it was a little bit of a tell that they left that edit out in their new specific plan. So, I didn't really appreciate that because that is something I think that was done intentionally. You can't miss that one. It was more writing. So, I didn't necessarily really think that that was well-thought-through. So, I just, you know, I hate to say this. I personally, from everything that is being asked of the Planning Commission, of the city, of the variations, of the concessions, it's too much. I do have a word written down here, and that word is "compromise." I think we could all look to compromise. Now, the applicant, in their own specific plan, stated that they are trying to achieve maximum density, and I can understand because the capex on this is going to be enormous, so you need to be able to monetize those rooms. And I just roughed out some math based on some general rule of thumb on the, what I would estimate the build costs, the fees, and all the different things. And I believe the applicant, when I said, "What do you think the rents are going to be?" And they kind of gave me an idea, like, "We don't know." And I didn't really appreciate that answer because you've run a capital per forma. And when I said, "Well, they range from $3,000 to $10,000, with the median being $5,200," when we came back to the rents, I think the applicant said, "Yeah, you hit it right on the head. It's going to be north of $100 million on the capex, and the rents are going to be at about $5,000." Well, when you run, if, I just roughed out, I took the rents times by 12, times by the unit count at $5,000, and then I looked for some general rule of thumb at senior housing expenditure, and the percentages ranged from 60% to 80%. So, I took it 70%. At $5,000, you're building, you're building like a two-cap, three-cap. You want to buy a high-cap rate, build a high-cap rate, sell at a low-cap rate. So, the rents are going to be $8,000, $9,000, $10,000, in my opinion. I've talked to some people that have family members in senior living that pay $7,000, $8,000 a unit for facilities nowhere near this good. So, I guess my final statement would be, I believe there's room for compromise. I believe that if they wanted to take that into consideration, you could lower your construction costs, so there's a savings there. But I believe that even these residents here, if you could figure out a way to build a three-story building, maybe reduce, you know, this is high-end. Somebody referenced it being close to a Club Med, and that's fine. If this was off in northern Huntington Beach where maybe the industrial, you want to change some land use over there, you know, I would imagine there'd be a lot less resistance, but right in the middle of, you know, a residential intersection, it just seems to be too much, wrong location, too big. 65 to 70 feet is enormous. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support this initiative, so thank you for your time.
Commissioner Kayla Acosta-Gavin?
Yeah, Hayden, I had a couple questions. So, just clarifying. Another project, like, let's say this project doesn't occur, and another developer comes in, and they say that they're going to build something that conforms to the current use. That current use allows them to build to 50 feet in height, which is, that would be about four stories, to a 10-foot setback, and we project that that could generate up, like, a maximum of 7,500 daily trips. Would that be correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And additionally, that project would not be reviewable by the Planning Commission, and it would be by right?
There are a couple of iterations where a commercial development could trigger a CUP. In the same context as this project, the grade does have, the site does have a grade differential greater than three feet, so more than likely it would come before the Planning Commission as a conditional use permit.
For the grading, was it? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then, could you address about the specific plan? We've had these come before us before, and I know that applicants have written them. Is that correct?
Yes.
And do you mind going into the general plan, like, how that development happens for the general plan, and do we typically use general plan amendments? Is that something that has come before the commission before?
They have come before the commission before. I think most recently, there was a project up in Bellatera that involved a general plan amendment that also included a specific plan, where there, it was an existing specific plan, and they were modifying it to accommodate development. But just to back that up, our general plan was most recently updated, as Commissioner Kennedy pointed out, about six years ago, and a number of elements were consolidated, and all of the new goals and policies that were developed that were adopted by the council envisioned about a 40-year planning period. State law requires at least a minimum of 10. So, we have taken steps to ensure that the goals and policies that we developed and proposed to the community for adoption were responsive to what we believe the needs to be. We don't always get it right. Again, it's a living document, just as the zoning code is a living document and can be amended by either council direction or an individual, property owner, business owner, what have you. So, it remains a very iterative process. So, I wouldn't really call a general plan amendment common, but it remains an existing and accessible mechanism for new development in the city.
Okay. And last question. So, the traffic has been brought up. So, in the Environmental Impact Report, did that compare current traffic levels to what the proposed project will impact?
So, in the context of the Environmental Impact Report, for the record, the first step in developing an Environmental Impact Report is something called the initial study. And the initial study is an examination of the project, comparing it to established thresholds of significance that are outlined by the California Environmental Quality Act. When the initial study was developed for this project, that analysis determined that the proposed project would result in a net reduction of daily trips when compared to commercial uses. And that metric is established by, I believe, the ITE guidelines, and as referenced in the Environmental Impact Report, were the 2021 ITE standards. And so, these are independently-developed professional metrics that were used. And so, as a result of the initial study's review of this project, the, any additional analysis was quote-unquote "scoped out." It was simply determined to be not potentially significant of an impact for this project. The trip generation rates remain the same for any development project, and in addition, the applicant did develop their own parking study, so that used similar metrics but more focused on their scope of use and what the change in land use would actually result in. And so, to that effect, there is not a, I think some folks had talked about levels of service, or, you know, what impacts that would have to traffic and circulation. The conclusion of the Environmental Impact Report via the initial study is that they would be less insignificant.
Right. Actual last question. So, I recall from our study session, is vendors and EMS service sites, they won't rent, they won't enter off of Bolsachica, right? They're entering off of Warner?
That's correct. So, the building has been specifically designed to provide a dedicated emergency vehicle, but also service vehicle deliveries and waste management vehicle access from Warner. It's a right-in only and a right-out only, and that's located at the more of the westernmost portion of the north side along Warner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Twining?
Thank you. I just want to point out a couple of statistics real quick. Huntington Beach, total area is 29 square miles. That's it. It's relatively small city. We have the ocean to the west, and 2,000 feet in from the mean tide line is all under the control of the Coastal Commission. 95% of Huntington is built out. There were several suggestions tonight to move elsewhere, go to Long Beach, go to Los Angeles, go to Santa Monica. 12 years ago, we moved my mother-in-law here from Oceanside, and we moved her into Huntington Terrace, where she started out in independent living, I mean, in independent living. Then she went to assisted living. Then she went to memory care. And 10 years after she moved in there, she died there. And it was nice to have her close by because we could go see her all the time. My wife went and visited her almost every single day. So, any suggestion to move to Long Beach, or LA, or Santa Monica, to me, is just kind of a non-starter. One thing that hasn't been brought up tonight, and I might have to direct a question to Hayden, I don't think a lot of us have thought about what could happen to that site should we vote tonight to turn this thing down. Do you not think that another developer might come in, and he's not going to build a senior living center there, and he's going to build a 180,000-square-foot, five-story, or four-story commercial building? Is that going to be better? Or how about a, or how about a multifamily, high-density development there that's going to put 210 apartment units in there where everybody drives? Is that what we want? I don't know if that can happen, but I think that if this developer can come in and basically petition or ask for a zoning change from commercial, then another one can come in and ask for a zoning change for high-density residential. Is that correct, Hayden?
Anybody can propose a new development project, and what would be different is the slate of entitlements in order to make that happen.
Correct. So, they could write the zoning amendment with the help of the Planning Department and yourself, and we'll be sitting up here a year from now, talking about a 210-unit, multifamily, high-density residential that could be five stories tall because it's allowed with, you know, density bonuses? Is that correct?
It is possible.
Thank you. This is a rare property over in Huntington Beach. When you consider we're 29 square miles, bordered to the west by the Pacific Ocean, 95% built out. There's maybe, by my count, and I've kind of been in the development industry in my career, there's really like three or four hot properties in Huntington Beach right now. One of them is Beach and Stark. This one, there's one over on Magnolia, I think, you know, I think it's not, maybe Talbert or Ellis. I know the developers are looking at that. There's not many. There's just really not a lot of place to build here in Huntington Beach. I grew up in Huntington Harbor. There was a gentleman spoke in favor of this tonight. I lived, I grew up in Huntington Harbor. I moved there in 1966. I've been a 58-year resident of Huntington Beach. I want to see Huntington Beach stay just like the rest of us do. Is this site the right site for senior living? And I ask, I've asked myself, I don't, I gotta, I've been asking myself because I've been really pondering this for the last several days. Who do I, who would I want to be next door to me if I lived in Brightwater, or if I lived in the condos, or if I lived in those apartments? Do I want, do I want 210 units of high-density living that's going to be five stories, the same size as this, with everybody in the place driving? Do I want a five-story, you know, 180,000-square-foot residential, I mean, a commercial building? Would I like the seniors there that aren't going to really drive at all? I'm, like I said, I'm so on the fence over this, and I got to, I'm trying to play the long game here, and it's tough because, you know, as I counted, it was 12 to 5 against this project, and I thought, I really thought it would be the other way around because I thought you guys would like to have seniors living next to you. But again, I'm pondering, so I can't really, you know, say where I'm going, where I'm at on this thing. I just don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I don't talk much up here, but I'm going to take a few minutes today. First of all, I want to clarify for Commissioner Kennedy a little bit on the specific plan, give you a little more background on it. So, I've probably done, worked on 60 to 80 EIRs, at least 50 specific plans. The general, again, I'm just generalizing based on my experience. Specific plans are typically written by applicants or by cities. It's, it can happen either way, and it's pretty common that it's, call it 50/50. Typically, a specific plan is written to formulate the idea to get the city on board, or it's written by the city to attract future development. That specific plan is always done generally first. Then, the EIR consultant is hired, and in almost every case, the EIR consultant is picked by the city that's running that project. I have never seen a specific plan internally withstand the scrutiny of an EIR analysis. Almost 100% of the time, a specific plan will have to be modified to meet the CEQA findings, and this is all done before it gets out to the public. It's all done through internal review. It's very rare for a specific plan written by an applicant or even by a city to stay exactly as it was when it goes through the CEQA internal process. And then, once the CEQA process is done, and it's finalized, and the specific plan is then modified to reflect consistency with CEQA, then it goes out to the public. So, again, this is just a generalization, and I appreciate you going through it, but it's generally, there is a bit of a safeguard between specific plans, and CEQA kind of is, the EIR is generally the biggest driver of the final specific plan. As for, I'm going to, you know, there was quite a few comments. I'm, I guess I'm not surprised that people didn't talk about hydrology and water and sewer, but you're going to hear me talk about it a little bit. So, the hydrology, there was a couple of comments provided that, actually, it was on a form letter, so it came in a number of times, that the proposed project would potentially, at first it said it would potentially cause flooding on adjacent properties, and then it went to a conclusion that said it will cause depth of flooding to increase at Bolsachica and Dunbar. And those are, those are big words. To cause flooding to another property is a big deal. So, obviously, I drew my attention. So, I did go through the hydrology report, and it, I came with a different conclusion. I found that the existing hydrology mostly sheet flows off the property through V gutters and delivers it to the curb and gutter, which is the major form of conveyance to the catch basins. And the proposed project would put an area drain and pipe system and essentially eliminate most of their water from entering the street, thereby creating additional capacity for adjacent runoff that uses the street. So, I found the conclusion, the comment provided in a number of form letters didn't appear to have reviewed the project hydrology, which is okay, but I just, I just want to give people assurances that it's very unlikely for this project to cause or exasperate flooding somewhere else. And certainly, the city should be on notice, Public Works, that that intersection of Bolsachica and Dunbar should be verified through the final, if the project moves forward and there's a final hydrology, that should be queued up and make sure that the applicant directly responds to that. But their current study would show it's unlikely to happen. As far as sewer and water, that did come up, and it came up actually in the public, in the study session. That one gets my attention too because general plans are regional water and sewer studies, water supply, sewer conveyance, sewer treatment. They do use those general plans. That's how you base all of your long-term decisions, all of your capital reserve, all of your, how you're going to spend, you know, 50 to hundreds of millions of dollars in your future on keeping those systems intact and that they function. And so, it's really important that a project that comes in and changes potential water and sewer, it's okay on a project-by-project basis, but if you see that happening across all cities in Orange County, that's a problem for Orange County Sanitation District, right? So, you do have to pay attention to what water supply assumptions are for the general plan and then what the proposed project. And so, I've... And so I've, good or bad, it's not an exciting job, but I've had to do probably 40 of these types of studies in my career. And so I did evaluate independently and found that the water and sewer projections for the existing zoning and the proposed project are essentially identical. You can, you could, I won't go into greater detail, but in this case, for those who are concerned about it, this project as proposed would be consistent with the types of water and sewer demands you would find from the existing zoning. So that, from some, it should not cause a problem, and it's reasonable to understand why the city agreed for water and sewer services to the proposed project. A little less technical, but this is probably, my way on this, on this board, I come in here, I look at projects, I read the documents, I typically talk to the city, I typically talk to the applicant if they ask. I come in here and I make a decision. I don't think much about it before and after, it's just how I work. This is the first project that I've spent quite a bit more time mulling over. I have a new puppy. It forces me to be social. This puppy's extremely cute, so everybody I talk to, everybody I see wants to talk. So I have spent a little internal campaign talking to most of my neighbors. I live within walking distance of the neighbor, of, of the proposed project. So I, I meet, I know most of my neighbors, I've been in my neighborhood for a long time, but I've met quite a few others. So I, I made a conscious effort to talk to people I don't know about this project. And I, my gut told me I was going to find a bunch of no's. I thought everybody was going to hate it because everybody I talked, the social media, everything you see is, "We hate development, no building in Huntington Beach, no change in Huntington Beach." That's, that's kind of all I hear. And so when I talked to a number of residents, I got some of that, of course, but I also got quite a few people that were supportive of it. They, I have, in our, in our neighborhood where I live in, there's very few people actually in my wife and I's age. It's mostly elderly's and mostly quite a few younger people. And it's very predictable, the type of response. The older, the older folks who are close to looking into those types of facilities are very supportive. The younger folks, where that's not on their mind, for most of them, unless, unless their parents live in Huntington. If their parents did not live in Huntington Beach, they said, "Nope, no project, not worth it." If the, if those same residents' parents lived in Huntington Beach, they were much more open and supportive of the project. So it's, it's an interesting dynamic. It's all about what, it's a very personal decision, I guess you would say, because if it doesn't suit your needs, then you don't want it, right? That's very natural. But I was surprised that there was about a half the people were supportive and about half were not. So I, I expected something different, and I was surprised. And, and I will share, this is, this is personal for me. My parents lived in Huntington Beach until 2001, and much to the kids dismay, they chose to relocate to the Central Coast, which has had its own perks. But I remember my father saying that, that him and, that my mom, or, yeah, my mom and him had actually looked at some senior facilities. And I remember that, but I didn't think I had it right. So I actually called him and talked to him about it last week, and he confirmed that before they moved, they visited all the senior facilities in the city of Huntington Beach at that time, and none of them fit what they were looking for. Now, I am not going to tell you that's the reason, that is the sole reason they left, but it was, at that time, they left the city of Huntington Beach, and that was one of the reasons they left. Not, not the sole reason, but they did take that into consideration, and they felt they did not have a place to move to in this city. So, you know, now that they're in their 80s, I wish they were still here, but I can't change that. So, you know, the last part is, this is, probably going to get my wife, she's going to be mad at me, but I actually have a family member who takes singing lessons at this musical facility on the property. So if this specific plan does move forward, I hope hindsight is sincere in their relocation efforts, because if you don't, I definitely will hear about it. But based on all that, I am going to be supporting the project. I know the height's a concern, but I do know that the first, the first height you see at 50 feet is basically what the existing zoning is, and then the setback is for the additional 15. So I know it's not perfect, but based on some of the things that Commissioner Twining said, I'm in the same boat, but I'm, you know, I guess I'm ready to say that I'm supportive of the project. I think the city needs this type of development. You can go anywhere in the city, and there'll be a bunch of neighbors telling you that that's the wrong spot and go somewhere else. I mean, that's common, that's all you hear. I know there was a ton of people that did not want Brightwater back in the day. They thought Brightwater would destroy the wetlands and destroy everything back there. I don't think that's the case. So I mean, it's just kind of, you see this typical, but I think the project has its merits, and I'm, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Are there any other, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just, I think, share the same sentiment with Commissioner Twining and Commissioner Adam. You know, I live on Beach Boulevard, and typically, the conversations that I hear around, most of the time is like, "Let's push everything towards Beach Boulevard," you know? When the homeless shelter came to, to our side of town, I could have done two things. I could have supported it, I could have come and protested, right? But in my opinion, I thought that supporting the, the shelter on Beach Boulevard in Slater, which is where, sort of where I live, it was a benefit for the entire Huntington Beach community because I knew that wasn't going to be approved in the Huntington Harbor area or any other area besides Beach Boulevard and Slater or close to that area. So, I mean, with that being said, I think we, we make sacrifices. Sometimes the sacrifices don't equal the benefits, sometimes the benefits don't equal the sacrifices. But I think in this situation, when we look at the, the development, what's currently there, what could potentially go there? Does it meet the needs of the local community or the surrounding Huntington Beach community? I think this is the best development that could go there, a senior project where a lot of seniors aren't driving. I know a lot of people don't agree with that. I know a lot of people don't agree with the height. I think overall repurposes the commercial area. We talked about declining in commercial real estate. We see the market, the market trends. I mean, they don't lie. It's not something that is just pertains to Huntington Beach, it pertains to all over the US. Whether that be related to COVID, whether you believe in it or not, I mean, that's just the market trends, and that's what it is. And also, I, I think it's going to bring good local paying jobs. So when we talk through the construction phase, those are temporary jobs, but it also will bring jobs to regular folks that are looking to live in the city. And those jobs, I would hope, would pay, you know, a good amount of money so that residents can stay and live here. Sort of that live where you work type of thing. So, again, I, I just wanted to share my support for the project, and yeah, so, thank you.
Commissioner Wood?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's a tough one, for sure. We have a lot of opinions about the massing of that building, but I do also share some concerns that Commissioner Adam and Commissioner Twining have brought up, that it could be something worse. I think we've all seen that today, one of the popular types of development is the industrial buildings that are going up at Bolsachica. I don't think this site would, would be big enough for one of those, obviously, but based on the current zoning, there certainly could be a use that's fairly intense and doesn't get you much better than what's being proposed, in my opinion. Some things that stuck out at me was, in 2020, the city did put in their housing element, policy 5.2, which is very supportive of senior housing. And I think we'll all agree that senior housing is a need, depending on location, I guess. And the other thing that I noticed was, going through the EIR, it's pretty rare that you see an EIR with so many limited impacts. Generally, there are more significant impacts as you go through each of the items throughout the EIR, and in this case, that was very, very limited. So the EIR contemplated all of the issues regarding traffic, air quality, noise, and the impacts are extremely limited. The other thing I noticed was that the architectural style of the building and the way it has been presented is a great representation of the seaside bungalow with height and materials, with high-end materials, with elevations that provide relief with some of the single-story elements along the frontage, as well as step-back, upper-story articulation, which reduces the massing of the structure. So there has been consideration to get some of the massing off of the street and set it back further from the curb on Warner and Bolsachica. And there's no doubt that we do have an aging population, as been discussed. And I think we had a speaker who commented on the fact that in today's world, the older office space is no longer viable, and most of those older buildings are going to be redeveloped as something else, and this is a perfect example of that. So in my opinion, the applicant has provided a facility that provides care for different levels of seniors at a high level with very high amenities. And, you know, at this point, I'll be supporting the project.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you. Just a couple of closing comments. It seems evident that this is going to pass. My, my, my final thoughts are, you can what-if all day long. Well, what if this doesn't pass? What are we going to get next? So I'll just leave that there. The thing about Brightwater, Ian, maybe you don't know, Brightwater was a huge compromise. The original plan was dramatically, dramatically bigger on the housing count. And all the builders, I think it was Lion Homes, maybe Lennar, all those big builders, their original plan was enormous. And so the word "compromise" was very fitting for, for Brightwater. I, I think anybody's asking for a compromise here. I know I would speak on behalf of how I would view this if I was a resident in, in that area. Nobody's opposed to senior living. You can what-if this thing all day long. And so with that said, those are my final thoughts on that. And regarding the jobs, when the thing's built, sir, those construction jobs will go away and you'll have 100, 120 employees. Any other use would provide jobs in that number or in excess of that number that would be well-paying jobs as well. So that's a wash, if not a negative, on the net job count, because as they've stated, they're only going to need 100, 120 employees. If there was something else built, if we did take that what-if and build something else, I can guarantee there would be more than 100 well-paying jobs in that locale. So. With that said, we'll, we'll see what happens with the vote, but...
No more commissioners, right? Oh, okay. Commissioner Twining?
Just, just, just a couple of closing comments. There was once a famous philosopher that said, "Life is a box of chocolates, you never know what you're going to get." That was Forrest Gump, 2005. We know what we're going to get here. Commissioner Kennedy said, "Yeah, we, you know, if, if it stays commercial, it'll develop more than 100, you know, it'll, it could develop more than 120 jobs." But at what, at what cost of, you know, a four-story, 800,000-square-foot commercial center there that's going to, that's going to develop a ton of traffic? Who knows? If it's a, if it's a, if it's a multifamily, high-density, multifamily residential, that's going to create no jobs, except for maybe the apartment manager. I just, I, I truly believe that creating, you know, and this is just me, I, I truly believe that creating senior living facilities should be seen as a socially responsible endeavor. We get it. It's too high, it's too big, it's, it's, it's not quite in the, excuse me, you want to go, somebody else want to talk? Excuse me, okay. But senior living addresses a genuine need within our community and can have a positive impact on the lives of our seniors. Many who have spent a majority of their lives here in Huntington Beach, and they don't want to move to Santa Monica, Long Beach, or Los Angeles. They could be our parents, your parents. And, and, and I believe this, this project actually gives, gives our seniors an option. Yeah. I, I'm going to be supporting the project now. Thank you.
I do have one last.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I have one last question for the Building Department. Let's say this does pass and they get their entitlements. Is there any guarantee that they will build this project? Or do they have the ability to sell this entitlement, you know, sell the entire project off after it's fully entitled and have some kind of a new variation come out without any further city oversight?
I think there's really two questions there. Can entitlements be sold?
Yeah, so they get their full entitlements. They said they're not going to go hard on their, on their purchase of the real estate until they have irrevocable entitlements.
So getting to that, to answer that question is, there are time limits, I believe it's 24 months, that they have to act on the, on the entitlements. They could, it, it could be a transaction that they sell to another developer, but the entitlement would have to be as approved. So if there were changes to that, depending on the delta of those changes, it could warrant coming back to the Planning Commission.
Can the developer answer that question?
Well, before they do, what is the delta? I mean, is it 10% of a variation on the entitlements? 5%? 50%? Which...
It's not a percentage, so it could, it could be anything. They grade it differently, the heights, I mean, in most cases, unless it's very, very minor, it would be beyond what we would approve administratively. It would have to be truly minor in scope.
Okay. And are we going to get any guarantee from the developer that they will be placing those utilities underground, underground as, as the city amended their?
I believe that's the condition of approval, correct?
It, it's a code requirement.
It's a code, it's, it's required by code.
Okay, it should have been in the specific plan.
Any other commissioners? Okay. My turn. I just wanted to, first of all, thank all the commissioners for their input and thank staff for everything that, this was a tough project, I have to say, in my opinion. I wanted to just go over a couple of things that the speakers had, and this is probably for you, Mr. Beckman, I believe. Okay? Can you address why there's some of the residents in this project that are two and three bedrooms?
The ultimate design and layout of the facility falls outside of the, the scope or the purview of what discretion the city has when it comes to these types of uses. And so there are some elements of the operation that will be guided, as I'm sure you know, by the type of license that they pursue through the state. But largely, if the future project is consistent with the scope of 202 units, then generally we would leave that up to the operator to design.
Okay. And then notices. Could you address the notification that went out to residents and affected?
Sure.
Businesses?
Absolutely. So the minimum code requirement for public notification is 500 linear feet from the property, and that's for both property owners and occupants. And so the city received mailing labels and checked those mailing labels for all of the owners and occupants within 500 feet. We then mailed letters to meet the minimum deadline. And so it is unfortunate that we hear commonly at public hearings that some residents didn't receive them, and there could be a number of reasons for that. Perhaps they're outside of the 500-foot radius. It doesn't, it sounds big, but, you know, linear feet for larger-scale projects may not actually encompass that many. Or there could be other issues with delivery or addressing. So it's really, it's not a perfect science, but I can at least verify that the city, in going through, was consistent and complied with the minimum requirement for notification.
I believe one or two of the residents or persons who came up here and spoke said that they had gotten an earlier notification, but not a later notification. I don't know if I'm, if I heard that correctly or not, but...
So there, there have been a couple of notifications that were sent either by the city or by the applicant that date back to November 2022.
Okay. All right.
It could have been one of those, it could have been for this.
All right. And then one of the speakers said that there's 32 assisted living in Huntington Beach. Could you address the occupancy or how many people are housed with those? Or do you know?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head, but in the context of reviewing this project, you know, I am aware of similarly sized facilities. There's about six that are of similar size. But again, that's, that's, there's a, a scale. There's a, a... There's a spectrum of the size and the intensity of types of facilities that provide these kinds of services. So, I don't have hard numbers for you on that.
Okay. And I know in the last presentation, you went over the projected needs of the seniors at Huntington Beach. Could you review that really quick? Do you know that off the top of your head again?
That may have been the applicant's presentation.
Was that the applicant? Could you please come down and address that, please? Thank you, Mr. Beckman.
Certainly.
Sure. The discussion at the beginning of September with regard to supply and demand outlined the existing senior living facilities in the city from memory care through independent living. The existing number of units in the city is approximately 600, 650. I don't have the numbers in front of me. And there is a recently approved project across the street here that's going to deliver about 200 units. And then this project is 200 units. Therefore, the projected number of units in the city would be 1,000, based on the total amount, including those two proposed projects. By 2025, i.e. two years from now, the study that we ran suggests that the demand for senior living units would be 2,000 at that time. And so, the unmet demand is approximately 1,000 units in the next two years. I guess the other piece of information we provided was that the total number of folks over the age of 65 is 70,000 by 2025 in the city. So, those are the numbers on that. With regard to the two-bedroom and three-bedroom question, I want to make sure we address that, too.
Sure, thank you.
Sure. So, there's only two three-bedroom units that are proposed in the community. Looking at all of the properties that we've owned and developed throughout the Western United States, generally speaking, our residents are moving from much larger, single-family homes and would like to maximize their amount of square footage that they have available to them. So, our fastest leasing unit at any, in any one of our communities is the two-bedroom units. However, you can only build so many two-bedroom units in any community. That's why we have a mix of ones and twos. The two three-bedroom units that are available are really just the larger square footages for those two individuals who might want the additional square footage.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you.
Before you exit, gentlemen, may I ask you, what's your definition of independent living?
Sure. So, independent living is, there's really four levels of senior housing, as we call it. There's the 55-plus active adult, there's independent living, assisted living, memory care. Then outside of that, you go into a medical, more of a medical environment, which would be skilled nursing facilities, convalescent facilities, things like that. So, generally speaking, independent living, as we see it across our roughly 1,300 units that we own, manage, is roughly 82 years old. And they require limited services, limited dining services, limited transportation services. And essentially, as they continue to age in place, will take more frequent care with their daily requirements.
Okay. But for the record, for example, when you guys are counting the available units, does a 55-and-over senior community with independent living not, is that part of your unit count?
Generally speaking, 55 doesn't have any services.
Right. But you just said independently. I'm talking independent living. When you were talking about unit count and lack thereof here in Huntington Beach, I know you have some large communities. I think this gentleman over here lives in Landmark. Is that not considered independent senior housing?
Yeah, we do include independent living, assisted living, memory care in the metrics.
Technically called age-restricted housing. And so, those are complexes that do not provide daily dining, do not provide the types of services that this building would provide. It's really just an older individual that wants to live in an apartment-type environment with older folks. So, that's not what this is.
I know it's not what you're building, but is it considered senior living, independent housing? When you guys talk about the lack thereof here in the city, are you factoring in communities like Landmark that have a big footprint? You're not.
No, correct. Yes, that would be, we're talking about communities that were providing services for seniors, not age-restricted living.
Well, you didn't preface it by that. You just said independent living units. I mean, again, it seems like this is a no-brainer. It's going to pass for you guys, but I'm just, the way you've delivered some of the messages was a little ambiguous, and I just, I don't think you were clear on some of your deliveries, but that's neither here nor there, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. So, I would like to continue since I've led everybody else. And then I'll come back to you, okay? So, don't cut me off, guys, okay? I'm done, I think, with you guys. And I wanted to thank you for coming back up and explaining that. Thank you. And just to reiterate, that this is not a skilled nursing facility. This is not a convalescent home, which is the same thing. And I'm going to tell you that, in my opinion, change is always hard. And I remember being on the school board when we sold the Bolsa Chica property, and which was eventually built into the Brightwater. And I had several friends that lived on Los Potos. And they were devastated. But after a while, they were okay. And I'm hoping, I'm going to be supporting this project. And I'm hoping that you two will at least accept this project and know that it's a need for this city, in my opinion. And on a personal note, when my mother-in-law, we had to move her from Chicago to here, and there wasn't any place close that was like assisted living that we could be in close contact with her. And both my husband and I both worked. And so, I would have loved to have had a facility like this for my mother-in-law. She went into an independent living, which was really, really difficult. And it was really hard on her. So, anyway, with that, I think, Commissioner Adam, did you have a comment? I'm done with mine, yeah.
No, no, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, Commissioner Kennedy, you're done, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to conclude Commissioner's comments at this point and move forward with asking if there is a motion on this item at this point. Does anybody have a motion, make a motion?
Did we have two motions to pass? We have to pass, wasn't there one motion to pass the EIR and then a second one to... So, isn't, aren't we supposed to be making two motions here?
Certainly, Commissioner. If I may, just to reiterate staff's recommendation, it would be motion to approve conditional use permit 21024 with suggested findings and conditions of approval. And subsequently, we would ask for a motion to recommend four actions before the City Council. One, to certify the EIR as adequate and complete. And then also, to recommend adoption of resolutions supporting general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and an ordinance for the zoning text amendment.
What he said. So, can we combine them all?
We ask that they be independent. So, again, just to reiterate, the commission's discretion for this project tonight would be over the conditional use permit. And then you would be separately making a recommendation of approval to the council.
Okay. Can we somehow get the fire alarm turned off up there somehow? Thank you. Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the certification of the Environmental Impact Report Number 21004 as adequate and complete in accordance with SEQA requirements by approving draft City Council Resolution...
That number will be determined by the clerk's office when it's processed forward.
For a number to be determined by the city clerk's office. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Twining and seconded by Commissioner Wood. I'd like to call for the vote.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Kennedy voting nay, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, do we have a, you going to make the next one, too?
Sure, why not?
Okay, good.
I make a motion to approve the General Plan Amendment 21004 by approving draft City Council Resolution Number to be determined later, zoning map number 22003 with findings in Attachment 1 by approving the draft City Council Ordinance Number to be determined later, and zoning text amendment number 22005 with findings by approving draft City Council Resolution Number to be determined.
Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Twining, seconded by Commissioner Acosta Galvin. I'd like to call for the vote, please.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Kennedy voting no, motion passes.
And the last one.
Okay, one more. I make a motion to approve the CUP Permit Number 21024 with findings and conditions of approval per Attachment 1.
I could second that one.
It's been moved by Commissioner Twining, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. I'd like to call for the vote. There we go.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Kennedy voting no, motion to pass.
Thank you. Yes.
I just briefly want to read the appeal language. It's only the CUP which would be considered a final action tonight that's appealable. The other actions you've taken are legislative recommendations to the council. But in terms of the CUP, a decision of the Planning Council can be appealed to the City Council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include reasons for session appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the City Huntington Beach City Clerk within the 10-day appeal period.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Okay, at this point, and thank you. There we go. There we go again. All right. Just one second. Okay. We're now at the consent calendar of tonight's meeting. And next, we have minutes on the consent calendar. And I'd like to ask commissioners if they have any edits or comments? No hearing, none? None? Okay. Let me do that. Okay. I'd like to first, we have to do them separately because I was not here on the 25th. Okay. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Planning Commission meeting minutes July 25, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, it's second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Twining, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Can we call for the vote? Oh, yeah, wait, whoops. Whoops. Thank you. Okay.
We have six ayes and Chair Paulman abstains, motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Twining. Next would be the Planning Commission meeting minutes for August 22, 2023. Do I have a motion? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Adam? And is there a second? Oh, you did, oh, it's not showing up on my thing.
Sorry, it's, different people pushed the button, so it had a problem.
Well, Commissioner Adam made the motion and Commissioner Twining seconded. Can we call for the vote, please? That one I can vote on.
Okay, all ayes, motion passes.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we're done with the minutes. Non-public hearing items, we have none, correct? Okay. And next on the agenda are planning items. Can staff provide a report?
Yes, I just wanted to let the commission know, we do have items coming on the 10th. We're actually planning to schedule a study session. So, just as a reminder, study sessions typically start at 5:00 p.m. And these are two city-initiated projects. It's a zoning ordinance cleanup to address a number of things and a zoning map cleanup. And they will be explained at the study session. And we'll likely bring those back then at the second meeting of October, based on the feedback we get.
And thank you, Mr. Snyder, for reminding us all that the study sessions start at 5:00.
And we will reiterate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Will there be an agenda as well for a meeting, or will it just be a study session?
There'll be an agenda and there'll be, yeah, there'll be reports as well put out.
Okay.
Okay. And before we close for the evening, do planning commissioners, do you have any comments that you'd like to provide? Hearing none. Guess what? This is the last item on the agenda, and we are hereby adjourned to the next Planning Commission meeting, which is on Tuesday, October 10, 2023. Done.